We'll bring the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, my second to order. Start with roll call.
Chair Dennison, Vice Chair Pevsner.
Here.
Commissioner Moran.
Here.
Commissioner Simcock.
Here.
Commissioner Yu.
Here.
And we need a movement for the approval of the agenda.
I move the, we approve the agenda as is.
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Great. And Council Liaison report?
Good evening, Vice Chair Pevsner and Commission. We have nothing new to report, we just appreciate all the hard work you guys have been putting in. Appreciate your meeting last time and all the length of time you spent on all of those agenda items. And sorry I missed it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, she, hey, your substitute was like, back in there. Yes, okay, very good. All right, community input. This is a time when anyone in the community can come up on an item that is not on the agenda. You can speak on anything you want, obviously, other than what's on the agenda. You have three minutes, we'll leave some latitude, since there's not that many people here. So, anybody want to bring on, come talk on anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, we will move on to tonight's agenda item. The public hearing for design review permit 2305 on 205 South Mountain Trail Avenue. Do you have a staff presentation?
Yes, Chair, Vice Chair, Senior Wolf will deliver the presentation.
Oh, there he is.
Thank you, Planning Manager Lynn. Good evening, Vice Chair Pevsner and Commissioners. Tonight, the Planning Commission will be reviewing the application for a design review permit for a project proposed at 205 South Mountain Trail Avenue. The application for a design review permit includes the consideration for the existing and proposed semi-subterranean garages of 763 square foot as a partial basement exempt from the gross floor area. Second is the construction of additions to an existing single-family residence in excess of 3,500 square feet, and the construction of a second story by addition, and finally, the project be exempt from environmental review. First, I would like to mention that in, through a lengthy review, staff has been unable to sufficiently meet the findings for, certain findings for design review. On screen, those are highlighted. The first is general consistency with the general plan, findings number three and four in compatibility with the neighborhood, and then finding eight D regarding the neighbors' views and privacy. Upcoming slides will clarify these points further. The property is situated within the southeast quadrant of the west side, on the west side of, I'm sorry, the southeast quadrant of the city, on the west side of South Mountain Trail Avenue, between Lowell Avenue and East Bonita Avenue. The property is within the residential low-density land use designation and is within the R-115 zone, being one-family development on lots at least 15,000 square feet in size. The property is also situated within a transition of residential density. In terms of development patterns, careful inspection of the aerial image here shows that the residential density north of the Lowell Avenue line is higher. And I'll go into further detail later in this presentation about the neighborhood. For now, just getting closer view on the property here, to the north is, are actually really on all sides here, to the north, to the east, to the west, and to the south are all R-115 single-family development properties. Here are some photographs. On the top left is the property to the north, the bottom left is the property to the south, on the top right is across the street to the north, and on the bottom right is across the street to the south. Additional photographs of the neighborhood are provided in Attachment B of the staff report. As for site photographs, on the top left here, we have the subject property as viewed from the street. On the top right is the subject property facing down the driveway. Note the difference in grade between the driveway and the flanking planter areas. On the bottom right is a walking path that stems off from the driveway and walks up to the front doors of the property. On center is the back patio of the house, and on the bottom, on the bottom left is the poolhouse and bathroom structure. Additional site photos are provided also with an Attachment B of the staff report. And moving on to project data, there's a lot to look at here, but I've highlighted a few points. First is the gross floor area. So the total gross floor area calculates the residence and the semi-subterranean garage at 5,220 square feet. If approval is granted to exempt the garage areas from this calculation, then the gross floor area will be 4,457 square feet, which is below the maximum allowable 4,491 square feet. For setbacks, the north and south side yard setback are existing legally constructed non-conforming with current development standards under Municipal Code Chapter 17 dot 20. That require the minimum side yard setback of nine feet and four inches, and a cumulative side yard setback of 27 feet 11 inches. However, we do have a non-conforming ordinance that's codified through Section 17 point 56 point 080. It addresses enlargement and alteration to non-conforming structures, and provides that alteration or enlargement may occur but only in compliance with the current development standards. The proposed project includes additions which are compliant with the setbacks as broken down in this table. It's also worth noting that there are two height values here. The one provided is a 20-foot-two height. It's a measurement for the highest volume of the proposed house, but there is a lower volume with a taller height at 21 feet 6 inches. In either case, both are compliant. So the upcoming slides on the building elevations will demonstrate how the proposed project accomplishes this. There is no change to the front yard setback on this slide. The established enclosed building line at the ground floor is not moving any further into the front yard, but the proposed project does include some projections into the front yard through a front porch, patio, and deck. So here's the existing site plan. The existing site includes a 3,280 square foot single-family dwelling with a 464 square foot tuck-under parking for two cars, a swimming pool, and a detached accessory poolhouse which includes a fully enclosed restroom. There are also two parkway trees on the north side of the front yard. Trees located in the parkway meet the definition of protected tree under Municipal Code Section 12 dot 20 dot 020. And as mentioned in the previous slide, these are the existing non-conforming setbacks here dimensioned. At the south end, it's four feet 10 inches, and at the north end, it is seven feet 5 And while the site has an overall gentle grade, there is a carve-out for the driveway which is roughly five feet below the adjacent grade within the front yard. Moving on to the proposed site demolition, it involves the demolition of a significant amount of the site. That includes the portion of the existing house, which is 514 square feet in size, and then the entire poolhouse, restroom structure, all the non-protected onsite trees, and many other site improvements. The parkway trees shown here at the northeast corner of the site will remain protected in place. In an upcoming slide, I will show more detail of the demolition of the house. From a high level, it does not call for the full demolition of existing portions of the house within the currently required setback areas. So, in draft conditions of approval, which is Attachment A of the staff report, condition of approval number 2.4.2, conditions the existing non-conforming portion of the foundation. So should the structure design call for new foundation within the currently required setback areas, work will be considered new and subject to compliance with the current development standard for setbacks. And now moving on to the proposed site plan. From the remaining footprint, the proposed project calls for minimal expansion of the enclosed floor area, the ground floor, shown on slide here within the highlighted areas of the building footprint. And it will expand the footprint into the front porch as previously mentioned. That also includes a tuck-under garage space, and that space is underneath the front patio, or front deck, I'm sorry. This space highlighted in purple is the tuck-under garage space, the deck above it, the front porch, and the front deck, or front patio. The proposed project also calls for the addition of a second story, the extents of which are shown in light yellow, and expansive roof deck shown in a golden shade. As for site improvements, the project proposes a new patio trellis, enclosed but open to sky detached restroom topped by a trellis, expansion of the existing swimming pool, a planting screen at the perimeters of the backyard, and a fire pit within, with seating area centered on the site. Moving on now to some of the other improvements on the site, the proposed project also includes a conceptual site, wall, drainage, and LID plan, low-impact development. In blue on screen is the stormwater drainage system primarily outletting into a planter box on the south end. Lined out in orange here on screen is the new retaining wall along the edge of the property for a raised planter bed. And then finally, in green, is the planter box for the LID system in which the drainage system will gather into. The project also calls for a proposed landscape plan. While it's conceptual, it is also well-prepared and demonstrates compliance with the city's water-efficient landscape ordinance. New planting includes an abundance of new trees and shrubs, and I will highlight the new trees to be planted. So first here are the parkway trees that are preserved. There's also four olive trees, two are within the front yard. There are a total of four strawberry trees, two within the front yard. One of those is with, within a focal point planter in the new walkway from the entrance. There will be seven cypress at focal points within the backyard, a tree screen of ficus to form a hedge screen for privacy at the southern boundary of the property. And altogether, that looks like this. The full landscape plan is in Attachment D of the staff report, that's page 45. It shows more detail of the landscape plan, including a colorful variety of shrubs, perennials, and ground cover. It's also worth noting that this conceptual plan, as I mentioned, is compliant with water-efficient landscape ordinance. It has a ETF of 0.39, which represents a value for water conservation above the minimum required even for commercial developments, which is a high bar to meet already. So moving forward in this presentation, I know this slide looks blank right now, but the orientation now is moving from a north pointing up to a north pointing left. So now this shows the building demolition plan. Dash lines, dash wall lines here represent portions of the house to be demolished. Although not expressly shown on this plan, the roof will also be demolished. Note that the 514 square foot of the southwest wing here is the part of the house being demolished, and that's on the lower bottom part of the slide here. Many of the other facade and interior walls will be demolished, but walls along the side will remain in place, and will receive new exterior finishes and other minimal modifications. The tuck-under two-car garage is also shown in reference here, with the reference line demonstrating where those points align to on the floor plan. So it's not physically in that location, it is actually underneath the space here. And now shown is the proposed first floor plan and the garage plan with reference lines also showing the points that would align. Shaded areas here represent the expansion of the building footprint and includes addition of enclosed area of the house. The floor plan will have multiple converging accessways. The first approaching from the, for the first approaching from north on Mountain Trail Avenue will be a new walkway bisecting the front yard and stepping up on center to the front patio and porch. Next is the driveway, where a walking path stems off stepping up to the front patio and porch, converging with the first mentioned accessway. And third is from the driveway accessible by vehicle into either the existing two-car garage or new one-car garage that will include an elevator up to the family room. Entering into the house from the front porch, you will be presented by a grand foyer and lobby with high-sloped ceiling roof above. To your right will be the bedroom quarters, to your left, and forward will be the shared spaces. Immediately to your left is the family room, where you will meet anyone entering from the elevator. Further south is the kitchen, which sits directly above a two-car garage. Moving forward from that, I'm sorry, moving forward from the entrance, at the front porch opens into a large double living room designed in open concept with an adjacent dining room. To the right from the entrance at the porch, at the front porch, you will notice a semicircular staircase with built-in bookshelves below. It's denoted on plan as the library. Sticking to the ground floor and moving further north into the short hallway are two bathrooms, two bedrooms, one of which is en suite. Moving on to the second floor, this plan will be entirely new. And so landing at the top of the semicircular stairway, you will enter into the study, which is almost like a den. South of the stairway landing is a hallway leading into an office, two bedrooms, a bathroom, and a laundry area. This hallway also provides access to a roof deck approximately 1,000 square feet in size. The office will also have its own access to a portion of the roof deck that wraps the north and west sides of the office area, and will serve more as a balcony. Hooking aright from the landing of the stairway will lead into a primary bedroom. All bedrooms on this level include a balcony, the primary bedrooms is private, and the other two bedrooms will share one. And the area shaded here on slide is the full extent of the roof deck. As mentioned, the roof deck takes access from two points, which is the hallway near the laundry area and the office. The side yard setbacks are now shown on slide. The second story will have a 12-foot setback from the north property line, and a 10-foot setback between the roof deck extent and the south property line. Note that the side property lines are not aligned with the building lines, and thus result in alternating widths. The dimension line shown for the south side yard setback is the maximum width the side yard will be for the addition. That's 10 feet 8 inches. Its minimum side yard setback that's closer to the front is 10 feet. So the roof deck also includes features to promote privacy, that being a solid railing and a higher structural screening provided by the hip roof over the first floor with The roof design is hipped roof with a small front gable accent for the front porch. Eaves are consistently two feet 6 inches deep. On slide, I've emphasized the roof plane separation with a border line for, a boulder line for the roof of the second story. Hip roof at the first floor terminates at the sides but is continued through by belt course primarily detailing the roof deck above, above the first floor, as will be seen in more detail in upcoming slides. Note that the primary bedrooms balcony and office balcony project slightly beyond the roof eve line above, and that the roof deck is primarily open to sky except where eaves exist projecting beyond the wall line of the second floor. And moving on to section elevations here, the section above is showing the east half of the building. The view faces the interior of the proposed structure. The sections indicate that the plate height for the first and second stories will each be nine feet, keeping the building low profile. Note the ceiling height on the garage level is only eight feet. Within the foyer, the floor-to-ceiling height will reach a maximum of 15 feet due to the sloping roof above. As the roof above the foyer slopes up, space in the second floor is created for the study, where the semicircular stairway lands. As will be seen in an upcoming slide on the facade's elevation, and just barely cut away from this section, is the wall adjoining the slope roof, which includes a set of three windows bringing natural light into the space for the study. The section below is showing the south half of the building. The view faces the interior of the proposed structure. Balance and structural design is seen here by the way the shared balcony mirrors its overhanging with the roof deck on the opposite side. Overall, sections provide supplementary evidence that no portion of the proposed structure will exceed two stories in height. Now we move on to this slide for the focused garage plan. Now this gets really technical, so hold on to your seats. Since part of the request in the designer review permit is the consideration of the garage areas, summing 763 square feet exempt from the calculation of gross floor area under the definition of gross floor area, I'd like to focus some analysis here to show how this qualifies as a partial basement. So the walls outlined are completely below grade, and other walls, which are A, B, and C, or A, B, C, and D, are partially below grade. As demonstrated by the section elevations on the previous slide, the height of the ceiling is eight feet above grade of the driveway. Some area of the driveway is slightly lower to control for drainage. Plan sheet A 2.2 includes a brief analysis of how much wall area is subgrade. The analysis determines that the maximum wall surface area exposed based on the average three feet cannot exceed 201 square feet for the one-car garage, nor 258 square feet for the two-car garage, determined by finding the product of the area's perimeter and three feet. And we're talking here as surface area of wall, not in floor area. Since walls A, B, C, and D are exposed above grade in some aspect, their surface areas have been, above grade have been calculated. Wall A, which is the wall surface with the, with the opening of the one-car garage, has a surface area of 120 square feet and is fully exposed. Wall B is the eastern sidewall of the one-car garage with 75 square feet surface area exposed and 109 square feet surface area below grade. For the one-car garage, a total of 195 square feet of surface area is exposed, which is less than the benchmark 201 square feet maximum that would be exposed. Wall C, which is the wall surface with the opening of the two-car garage, has a surface area of 168 square feet and is fully exposed. Wall D is the southern sidewall of the two-car garage with 64 square feet surface area exposed and 104, 104 square feet surface area entirely below grade. For the two-car garage, a total of 232 square feet of wall surface area is exposed, which is less than the benchmark 258 square feet maximum that could be fully exposed. Therefore, the garage spaces meet the definition of partial basement and qualify for exemption from the gross floor area calculation under paragraph three of the definition of gross floor area. At this point, would the commission like to pause for any questions?
Any questions? You're the technical man there. Go ahead, Pat.
So we're here to decide if, if it's a partial basement or not? But it is a partial basement by definition?
It is a partial basement by definition. It is at the discretion of the commission to exempt it from gross floor area calculation.
Okay.
I mean, do you have any technical questions, or?
No, that was just that.
Did you understand all that?
I understand the technical part. Thank you.
Definition of partial.
Would you like more time on this slide?
I'm fine, yeah, go ahead.
Let's move on. Moving on to the elevations. Shown on slide is the proposed east building elevation, and below is the comparable east existing building elevation. Note that the development standard for angle plane is met. The takeoff is from the grade at property line, which for the south side sits at the elevation higher than the garage level, which is within a planter area. I know it's a little bit hard to see on the slide, so maybe the television screens might be easier to see the detailed parts of this slide. Along the second story addition, additional structure will be added atop the southern portion of the facade, but it does not raise the ceiling height within the space below, which is the kitchen and family room. This is additional privacy for the roof deck. On the right of the slide is a sampling of the exterior building materials that will be used. Materials include clay tile roofing, complimentary stucco and stone siding, wall-mounted lights, a Corinthian-style column, and cast pilasters. Additional materials and details are included in the staff report as Attachment E. Moving on to the other building elevations, on slide now is the proposed west elevation, and below is the existing west elevation, which is the rear. And the shaded area on the existing elevation is the portion of the southwest wing which will be demolished. Note that the proposed projection, will maintain a similar envelope, I'm sorry, the proposed project will maintain a similar envelope through retention of roof slopes in hip design. And then I've also outlined a portion of this building on the second floor. That portion overhangs, and it doesn't read well on this, but it will read well on other plans coming up. The south elevation has been kept relatively minimal, but continues the character through use of architectural detailing. Note that the elevation is not a perspective image, meaning that all objects shown are size to scale, and distant objects will appear larger than they are. Therefore, I felt it good to point out that although the second story appears large from the south side, it is actually much further setback than the first story, and in perspective will have a much smaller appearance than shown here. And so I've gone and taken the liberty to point out on each wall surface what its distance would be to the property line. On the second story, the closest wall enclosure, which is the bedroom, will have a distance of 26 feet 6 inches from the south property line, and the next would be for the office of a 45-foot-four distance, which is nearly on center to the property. And then also note the elevation levels here, simplified from the building elevations. These values only represent the finished floor levels relative to the first floor, and note that these do not represent ceiling levels. Now showing the north elevation, again with proposed above and existing below, with shaded area showing the portion to be demolished in the existing. Architectural elements can be seen continued on this elevation as well, and the distances from the property line and the building walls are shown with the closest being the existing seven foot 5 inches to the bedrooms' wall, and the closest addition comes to the north sideline of 12 feet at the second floor. Also note that the second floor overhang is apparent on this elevation as well. I've outlined it, but it's a little bit hard to see. It's on center on the second floor of the proposed elevation. Now the colored elevation give a better idea of the proposed outcome for the architectural style. The Spanish Mediterranean style here is the most parent in the use of clay tile roof, tied with the complimentary stucco and stone cladding utilizing a warmer tone tan color. Columns and pilasters will also be used. Doors and windows will also be framed in decorative molding to complement the ornate detailing of the columns. Even overhanging floors will be decorated with corbels. The front deck and roof deck are accented by a belt course wrapping the overhanging floors. You can see this detail being used on the front elevation, on the front deck above the tuck-under garage, and that would be right here as I'm pointing. Okay, and then I also wanted to note that the front elevation, there is a co-planar transition in wall material from stone to stucco. So, and I also want to mention here just by reference, in line with the Stonegate Design Guidelines, which I need to underscore is not applicable to this project, but rather encouraged, all transition of exterior All transition of exterior building materials in this design do occur at interior corners, with the outlined section here being the only exception. The architect has proposed a subtle vertical break in wall material that will be shown on an upcoming slide. The second floor portion overhanging becomes more apparent in the north elevation, which is at the bottom of the slide here. I'm pointing to that on the projector. Note that the subtle shifts in color here are going to be due to the software rendering of global lighting, which brightens the front elevation and saturates some of the colors. It is not the intent of this design to have two different stone and stucco and roof colors. Also note that there is a subtle distinction in the color for the stucco on the fully enclosed walls and on the solid railing. This is to visually distinguish one wall plane from another, but again is not intended to be different in color. On the west elevation and continuing on to the south elevation, you can see the continuation of the belt course on the roof deck wrapping the full extent of the roof deck. You will also notice the periodic breaks in railing of the roof deck, much like the front porch where the railing transitions from a solid clad stucco to an open ornately designed metal railing. The previously noted second floor overhang is again apparent on this west elevation and I'm pointing to that there on the projector screen. Note that the south elevation, some solid deck railing appears to be unintentionally colored or brightened. That's right there. That is supposed to be the same color as railing on this elevation. And again, moving on to the section details I mentioned earlier. First is on the left is the section callout you might have seen, detailing the interface between the new one car garage and the adjacent walkway that stems from the driveway. On the right is the co-planar transition detail from stucco to stone. And this is a stone cap that would be the vertical break in wall material. And just so, I also want to note that these two sections are at different scales. They're not meant to be comparable in scale to one another. So moving on to street elevations, the adjacent properties are two fifteen South Mountain Trail, and that's the one to the south or to the left of the screen, and one ninety-five South Mountain Trail, which is to the north or to the right of the screen. The subject proposed project maintains the existing building separations between the adjacent houses. The second floor additions will be further separated from the adjacent houses. So for between the north and the subject will be fourteen feet, four inches, which is existing, and it will add a distance separation of four feet and two inches to the second floor. Similarly to the south end, there's an existing seventeen foot, one inch building separation. And that adds twenty-one feet and eight inches building separation to the second floor. I've also projected the finished floor levels and the roof ridge level of the proposed project to show its relationship with adjacent homes. Between the subject site and one ninety-five South Mountain Trail Avenue, the existing elevations are shown to be nearly equivalent, but two fifteen South Mountain Trail Avenue was situated at a substantially lower elevation than the subject project. The first floor level of the subject project maintains its existing elevation, which is about the same height as the top plate of two fifteen South Mountain Trail to its south. At two fifteen South Mountain Trail Avenue, the ground level is approximately twelve inches higher than the garage level of the subject project. For reference, the approximate difference in elevation between the roof deck level and the subject, for the subject proposed project, and the ground level of the southern neighbor is eighteen feet, give or take a foot. And I've also put here a street view image shown for reference of the subject property on the right of that image and the property at two fifteen South Mountain Trail to the left of that image. And the architect has also provided some 3D perspective renders here. On the top left is a relatively eye level perspective from the northeast side. On the bottom right is an aerial perspective from the northeast side as well. And on the top left here is a relatively eye level perspective of the rear facade from the northwest side. And on the bottom right is a perspective of the property slightly above the pool level, again within the backyard. So in terms of development patterns, simply observing the aerial image shows that the residential density north of Lowell Avenue, north of the Lowell Avenue line, rather, is higher in density. Per zoning, it is twice as dense or higher. So that is this line here. R one with a seventy-five hundred square foot lot size minimum is twice as dense as R one fifteen with a fifteen thousand square foot lot size minimum. R two allows two dwellings on seventy-five hundred square foot lots, so that would be double what R one would allow. And the circle projected around the property is the three hundred foot buffer radius in which we analyze the neighborhood. An analysis of the neighborhood's lot and house sizes shows that the existing property ranks eleventh among its thirty-seven other neighbors. Map number twenty-nine is discounted as an unusable sliver of land. The proposed project would rank first, rising above the second place by roughly four hundred square feet. And of the thirty-seven neighboring properties, four are going to be two-story, which are outlined on the map. Map number eight outlined is a two-family development in the R two zone. Map numbers five and seven are outlined within the higher density R one zone. And map number thirty-nine, which is on Bonita Avenue, is the only other property within the same zone as the, that is two-story. The shaded area here represents, again, that's on the previous slide, that portion's zoned and developed for higher density, single and two-family residences. And the top one-third of neighbors here shown and demonstrated in the green highlight comprise entirely of properties within the same zone density and have similar or greater lot sizes. Based on the top one-third of house sizes, the project would reach between one hundred fifty and two hundred percent the median and average values of house sizes. So moving on to design review findings. While staff find that the project can be fully compliant with the zoning code and is consistent with many policies of the general plan, policy L seven point three places a limit on the height of new buildings to reflect the prevailing height patterns within the community. So based on the three hundred foot radius neighborhood analysis, we saw that there were four other properties that have an apparent two-story building height. Of those four, only one is within the same zone. And as shown in the street elevations, the neighboring adjacent properties are also single story in height. For finding number three, it's about compatibility with the existing neighborhood. There is difficulty in meeting this finding as the neighborhood analysis demonstrates again that the proposed project will be of significantly higher scale by house size. However, the physical attributes of the proposed house are compatible with the landforms and surrounding wherein the design is well reflective of the gentle slope of the slight site and street. For finding number four, this is again compatibility with the neighborhood. This is more as an aesthetic value. The neighborhood can be characterized as low-profile, widely spanning, single-story, one-family homes and generally have presence from public view as such. The proposed project introduces a design that is primarily two-story. And for finding eight D, this is essentially maximizing the project to maximize the neighborhood, neighbors' views and privacy. So there is a placement of a roof deck which is particularly close. That's again ten feet away from the property line of the southern adjacent neighbor. And although the placement of the roof deck is close to the backyard of the neighbor, the design includes mitigation in the form of tall tree screening along the southern sideline, which would retain privacy for the neighbor, but potentially cause obstruction to the view of, to their view of the mountain. Tonight, planning commission may approve this application. It would need to identify findings that can be made for approval and direct staff to prepare a resolution for approval to be considered at the next meeting, which is May sixteenth. Planning commission may approve the application with modifications, one or more. They would also need to identify findings that can be made for the approval and direct staff to prepare a resolution, again approving the project to be considered at the next meeting. Planning commission may deny the application, identifying findings that cannot be made for approval and thusly direct staff to prepare a resolution for denial. Or planning commission may continue the public hearing and provide direction to staff and the applicant. This concludes my presentation. The owner and the architect are in attendance tonight and would like to make a presentation. But before I turn it over, does the commission have any questions for staff?
Any questions for? Okay, sure. They can come up. All right, we have no questions.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Edgar Ramoni. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm with Habitat. And first of all, I would like to really thank the planning department for helping along into coming up with what we have tonight as far as presentation. Just to give you a little background, we started this project about two years ago. And in those two years, we went from, from a big scale project and we reduced it to the maximum possible where it meets his requirement. I mean, the owner requirement and at the same time meet with the planning department, the requirement with planning department. Like I said, I really think that first of all, the planning made enough presentation to talk about the project, but I'm open for questions and I know that the owner would like to say something also. But if there is any question, I'm open for a question.
Yeah, any questions for the architect? Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you very much, planning committee, for having us here today. The reason why I want to present this because I felt that this is an opportunity for our family to be introduced to the community one way or another. I work a lot, so I rarely stay at my home, but I felt maybe the community needs to know who we are and why we wanted to remodel our home. My last name is Bitar in Arabic. We're in Syrian descent, Syrian Armenians. But it means in English Smith. It's actually the same exact translation from Arabic to English, which is Smith. I know Smith is the most common last name in the United States, so you can add Bitar to it too, so we'll make it more popular. Who we are, that's me, I'm Fahed Bitar. My wife was here and she left, Deena Bitar. And we have four kids. George was here. He's a special need kid. Then we had Jenna, who was the girl running around. John was sitting in the back and Jacob is the one making the most noise. And I actually have to send him back because I didn't expect him to be this, I didn't work too loud. I said, you guys need to go home. At least you guys saw them. And over the last few years, my mom became a widow, so I'm basically providing for her and my in-laws and my wife's parents retired and actually we're going to be caring for them. So our story. I came to the United States in nineteen ninety for studying. My dad told me you need to leave the Middle East. You don't belong there. I agree. I graduated from Cal State Long Beach in nineteen ninety-five, graduated from Ross Medical School in nineteen ninety-nine. I did multiple training programs, part of my USC CAC, did fellowship program at New York and another one in Tufts. I finished and came back home. I consider California my home in two thousand and ten. I did get married to my, my wife is an English Literature major, graduated from Syria. We got married in two thousand and eight and we moved to California in two thousand and ten. Initially, we rented a house in Hastings Ranch from two thousand and ten, two thousand and fourteen, and then became the story of two oh five South and Mountain Trail. In two thousand and ten, George was born. When we bought the house in two thousand and fourteen, or we started looking for a house in two thousand and fourteen to look, to look for a permanent community to basically settle in and raise our family, we toured many homes in Pasadena. We didn't feel that that's the community that we're going to be in. After church, actually, something happened. Some family wanted to meet with us, but me and my wife felt we don't want to meet, so we ran away and we have an open house here and somebody told us about Sierra Madre. So we came just to see the house. We didn't actually plan to buy the house. Now, we brought with us George. George is special need kid. Every time he goes into a house, he start crying that we toured before. When we walked into two oh five South and Mountain Trail, he start laughing. So my wife goes, okay, we were not planning to buy the home. It was a little bit outside our budget, but let's see what happens. So after we toured the house and the property, we fell in love with the property and we put an offer actually to buy the home. However, when they appraised the home, it came a hundred thousand dollars below the asking price, so the, we have to come up with a hundred K extra. We said, you know what? We can't do it. We're going to let it go. So we actually let it go and we actually pulled out of the, the escrow and we said, that's it, we can't do it. There's another buyer who tried to buy it, but I guess also they fell out of the escrow. Now, at midnight, I remember that very clearly. I was trying to go to sleep and my wife started yelling. She goes, the house is back on the market. The house is back on the market. We thought the house is going to be sold because there's another family tried to buy it. And then she called the, our real estate agent at midnight, our time. She wasn't here honeymoon in Germany. And she goes, the house back on the market. We need to pursue it. So we got lucky. I guess the house was appraised a little bit higher and then the hundred thousand dollars basically became almost nothing, so we were able to come up with the money and we bought the house. We moved the house at that time, two thousand and thirteen in August. The escrow closed on July thirty-first. Initially, the Gersh family wanted to lease the house, I mean rent it back from us, but they decided not to do that because they were trading to buy, they took the money to put another house if they find it, so we were able to find it. So we, at that time, we're only three, me and my wife and then my son George. But over the years, our, our family did grow. We had Jenna after seven years. And then COVID hit and then we had two more. So we had nothing else to do, so we had two more babies. So now we're up to five, I mean, five people. And then, as I said, my in-laws retired and my mom also widow now, so we have to take care of them. So there's at least, at every given time in our house, there's between six to seven people at least. Now, not counting my brother. If he comes over over the weekend, brings his kids, we have at least twelve people. And when my in-laws with us, it goes up to nine people. So we definitely need more space. When we bought the house, we looked at the house, we knew there's a major work needs to be done. The roof, we knew from the beginning that needs to be changed, but we tried to postpone it by patching it because we wanted to remodel the home. And actually, this year, I just got a notice from my broker that the home mortgage insurance will drop us because the roof is too old. That's fine. I think we have to find another company to get another mortgage for the home. And there's a lot of major leaks. I have a, my backyard had a major leak. I got a plumber, couple of plumbers, they estimate at least five, fifteen thousand dollars just to start the digging. So that's a problem. I have every other week or every other month, a water leak. And you can look at my water bill. Sometimes go a thousand dollars because there's a leak somewhere. I have to fix it. The water and part of the house comes rusty and yellow. That's, that means the water pipes needs to be changed. And there's a lot of, the aesthetic of the house, if you go and look at it now, I don't know if you guys have a chance to look at it or not. The paint is coming off. It looks very ugly from the outside. I think it's due for a work. The pool needs a major work. And the, as I said, it actually looks old. And the garage, all of it needs to be made over. So based on all these findings, we decided to basically go pursue a remodeling. Of course, we had options to move somewhere else and buy a house somewhere else. But we decided not to do that because we really love the neighborhood. My daughter loves the place. I love the place. My wife feels very safe and happy in the neighborhood. It's close to the freeways. I work in Glendora and Covina area, so I cover that neighborhood. So basically, it's very convenient for us to stay in that neighborhood. My wife's, my daughter start going to High Point Academy in Hastings Ranch. My daughter goes to, my, my son goes to Bridge to Montessori in Sierra Madre. So very, we're very established in this community and we really wanted to move forward by remodeling the home and staying in this community. Sometimes it's easy just to sell it and go somewhere else, but I think given all the facts that we love this neighborhood, we grew to appreciate what we have, we decided to pursue remodeling the home. We know it's a tough task. It's not an easy task. Everybody I talk to, they say it's a very tough task to do a remodeling. And it took us two years with Habitat Classic. I actually had another person to help me out in the beginning, but I felt that he's not the right fit. So I have to let him go and then hired Habitat Classic. And then since then, thanks to Joshua, he's been very responsive and we really appreciate his input and the whole planning committee. You guys were great as far as guiding us how to, how to modify our plans to meet your planning committee guidance and recommendations. We're open to any alterations to make the house more compliant, if it's not compliant. But we also urge you guys not to delay too long. It's been two years. And I need to make a decision with my family where to go from here. But I really appreciate it if you can help us out to move forward. Appreciate it, appreciate it. Any questions for me?
Any questions for the applicant?
Have you had any interactions with your neighbors?
Yes, I have, yeah.
With this design?
Oh, with this design, I, they, like, there's a neighbor in front of me, Mr. Kim, I think, he knows. Mr. Huang, he knows. Do I spoke to him about it? Yes, I do have some interactions, but I, because the plan keeps changing or the, the house keeps changing, it's hard to tell. What's the final look and it look like or what's the house gonna look like. But they know, we are working on remodeling it, yes. At least two neighbors, they know. But I, I can't tell, I knocked on everyone's house telling them I, I'm remodeling it. No, I did not do that.
Thank you. Any questions? Just one question. You had existing, you have pre-existing setback problems, correct? So those aren't getting any worse in this design, right? But you're having to work within those parameters because. I mean, I guess you could bulldoze more of the house and take care of the setback problem, correct? But I mean, was that, was that a consideration? Maybe I should ask the architect.
By the way, what I learned from this presentation today, that what I do for a living is nothing as detailed as this. And as, as complex as this. I mean, I do surgeries, but I have to say. This is a lot more complex and detailed than what I do. So any questions about the architect? He's the, I, I cannot, I, I don't know how to answer.
I'm not going to you for any surgeries.
Well, you'll be surprised because research, research my name and you find out.
By the way, I'm alive because of him. He's my heart doctor.
You know what they say, you know?
You were talking about the setbacks. You were asking about the setbacks.
Yeah, you're, you're working with.
The existing setbacks, yes, they do not comply with the existing rules and regulation. But apparently when the house was built, so I guess it's what's called non-grandfather then or.
Yeah, pre-existing, non-conforming, but you worked, what I'm getting at, you worked within those and there were some.
Not only that, we did increase, especially on the second floor, we did increase way on both sides. Like in his presentation, he showed it. I can't recall the exact number, but yes, we did increase that setback and we meet the new code requirement.
Okay, but I mean, part of the difficulty in what you built into your design was correcting the defects of the house that are intrinsic to its age and. Some of the dilapidated condition and whatnot. And so you had to work within the setbacks that you were there.
Actually, we, we had really hard time finding the property line until we did some extra research because you don't know where it is. I mean, there is so much landscaping between the, the properties. It's so hard to find, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for architect? Okay, very good. Thank you. If, if they, if they come up during discussion, since there's really, you know, pretty open, we can bring you back up if we have other deliberations. But I'll make the, yes.
I was just to, before we start discussion, could we do the disclosure of site visits?
Yeah, I was gonna, well, I'll do that. I was gonna see, I'm gonna make the formal announcement. If anybody wants to come up and speak on this project to. I said it spoke already, you can come up and have three minutes. Seeing no one, okay, now we will move on to site disclosures. Did anybody go formally or drive by or see the?
I drive by this thing every day, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I go down Mountain Trail every day, so.
I appreciate the Easter decor and everything and you know, all that stuff that was there.
Sure. Did you, anybody go onto the property?
No.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. All right, well, and I saw no, no discuss, so we'll bring it back to the planning commission for discussion. I think maybe we'll go, we'll start with. I don't know. Yeah, if you want to.
Yeah, I could jump in.
Let the architect start.
So. Let's see. The whole discussion of the basement counting or not counting, I think. Based on the, your description of it, I'm going to take your word for it that it meets it and I'm okay with considering that not to count. I'm okay with that. I, I do get a sense that you were very meticulous as to try to figure out the best way to kind of add to it as much as you can and all that. And I, I give you kudos in figuring some of those things out. So I think that's always good. I have two areas of concern and I think that's the discussion that I think I want to kind of have. I have nothing against the house. You need the extra rooms and all that. That totally makes sense. It's your house, the style of it. It's not my cup of tea, but it's, you know, you love it. And so, you know, that's, that's good. The first portion that I see above the existing garage, where the kitchen is now currently. The massing has increased by like five, six feet. And I know part of that is to cover the deck that's on the other side of the, the roof. But I think that because your neighbor is actually sitting pretty level, maybe down a foot or two on that side of it. That extra mass at that corner is really going to stand out, especially when the main street that you're driving through, that's the first thing you're gonna see of that mass. So I would say maybe try to reconsider bringing that back down because you're, you're actually taking your whatever nine foot. You know, top plates there and you have to increase it like another five feet to cover that thing, right? So structurally it becomes more cost effective, you know, all, all that stuff. And so, because what you're trying to gain is privacy from the street for the homeowner.
Exactly, for the next door.
But it's affecting sort of the, the, the scale of the building and what the neighbor is actually going to be looking at. Because then it looks like a two-story building right at the ten-foot mark, right? So I would just say, try to reconsider that because. And then the second thing is, I appreciate that it would be nice to have a, a deck on the second level. You know, with the bedrooms that are coming off of there and all of that. But then what we try to do is we try to focus that, that deck area to face the backyard and not so much the side. And now I know you're mitigating it. We're gonna put some planting and all that stuff, but we know what happens to planting sometimes, right? It doesn't work out the best way. And so you're sitting higher and you're up there and you're gonna be looking down at the neighbor. I mean. We don't have view protection in that sense of you can't look down at your neighbors kind of thing, but. We want to minimize it as much as possible. We want to be comfortable and sort of respectful to the house that's already there, right? So I think if you can maybe cut down on some of the square footage of the deck upstairs and focus it more towards the back, I think I'm okay with it. But the idea that this thing wraps and it goes and it looks straight into the side of it and you're sitting much higher. If it was equal, maybe it'd be a different kind of case, but. So those are the things that I'm kind of looking at. But this idea of the third garage tucked in, all of that, you've figured it out. I'm okay with all those things. Material wise, it looks like you're using stone, stucco, railing. It was a little hard to kind of distinguish a little bit on some of the areas, what, what was happening, but. Yeah, the little weird cantilever pop out on the back. Seems a little weird, but you know, it doesn't bother me as much. I think it's the other two points that are kind of. I would like, hopefully that you'll work with us to kind of figure that out. What's go through first and then you can come back and.
Yeah, well, I'm just gonna let everybody stock and there, there may be some considerations because we want to have a discussion on what your ideas about changing it, if we have to bring this back. Anybody else? Pat or Christine? I don't care who's.
So as, as far as the, the basement level. Or the, not basement level, but the, the partial basement with, with subterranean basement. My, my thought on the basement is we, we allow the extra square footage just because we can't see it. In this case, we see it. It's, it's, the, the, the view from the front is almost totally there. So we see the size of that area. So I'm not as inclined to taking that off the square footage as we normally measure square footage because I can still see it. As far as the, the rest of the house. I think you did, except for the, the portion that he was just talking about around where that, that railing is above the garage level. It does look really tall. It's gonna look massive to the neighbor. The, my problem is. This neighborhood that I've been driving by since I was your children's age. Is, is a little different. This is a single-story ranch house area. This house already to me is one of the bigger looking houses in that area. Adding a second story to that kind of pops it out of character for the area to me. I know you want this, the, the room. But I, you've done a pretty good job at minimizing the look of that second story. It doesn't look like a big box or something. But the, to me, the house looks very big. If there's a way to lessen that, I think it would be to stay down and go back. My concern is from the street, it's just not gonna look like the neighborhood.
Chris?
Yeah, I, this is maybe a question for the architect. It looked like the elevator goes from the, one of the garages. Up to the first floor. Did you guys have an elevator that went up to the second floor as well? It looks like your son maybe needs an elevator.
There is possibly a plan to do that, yes. There is a possibility.
But you guys didn't have that in this plan?
Not yet. We, we, it was suggested. We are thinking about it, but we should need to know it. We can consider adding it, yes.
I was just wondering if you wanted to add it or not.
It's come before and it's actually on the table to think about it. Now remember, in the house, there's two bedrooms at the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're thinking George will end up staying.
So you're in the camp? Because now you're talking, the camera's on your.
So one of the issues, getting him from the car to the house is the first step. So that's why the elevator from the parking to the first floor. And we intentionally had two bedrooms on the first floor because one of them will be possible for George. To stay in it. So we don't have to keep taking him up the stairs and downstairs. But that is, we understand that. If we decided that he needs to stay with us on the second floor, then yes, there is a consideration. I think Joshua brought it up that you might want to consider an elevator for the second floor for your son's sake. But that's why we only had one elevator because we know that we can solve that problem by keeping George on the first floor.
I, I was just making sure that whatever we approved tonight doesn't like preclude, maybe that's a question for staff, if they wanted to add that elevator later. I'm not sure about those.
Yeah, we can work that out.
It's all inside the house.
It's all inside, yeah. That's what I'm checking. I'm not an.
No, no, we understand that. We appreciate your concern because that, that's actually tells us that.
It makes sense.
It makes a lot of sense, but for us, the first, getting him from the. From the parking to the house is an important part. Inside the house, he has his own room. We might keep it for him, so he will stay in it. He doesn't need to go up and down the stairs all the time.
But it sounds like it's all interior, so whatever they decide later.
It's not like we're exposed and we see it or anything.
Right.
So that's just one I wanted to check to make sure that they would have that option. Because it, you never know when you move into the house or the situation may change. Okay, with the partial basement, I am with Commissioner Yu in that, thank you staff. To me, it meets the definition. I'm okay with not incorporating that into the square footage. To me, it would be more a consideration of if the, if the basement was actually being used for like bedrooms or other things. I would be more inclined to say, ah, this is not inca, since it's all garage, to me, garages. Not being part of the square footage, just in general makes sense to me and because it's another garage and they seem to have a very good justification for having that extra garage.
Well, it's all the garages.
Yeah, it's all the garages, but the, there's an existing garage there already, which doesn't presumably count as part of their square footage.
Oh, it does.
It does now, okay. In, in any case, because it's all garages and because it meets the definition, I'm, I'm comfortable with. Not including that as part of the square footage. I agree that in the analysis, it may not be completely in the character of the neighborhood. In, in general, I am a proponent of the character sometimes evolving with the times as well. And I appreciate the, the very needs of families in our community. And I think it's extremely valuable to our community to have families that value that multi-generational kind of staying together and having options for those. I know even my own family, as we grow, we toured, you know, a five-bedroom house the other day and there aren't that many of those larger options in our community. And I think that can also make sure that our community continues to be an option for the younger generations. Because sometimes it's the older generations who are able to afford these larger houses. And allowing that living situation to also happen in our community. I agree if every house on the street was like this, this would be also in balance. Unbalanced with the character of our community, but I, I, I'm comfortable in, in having more of those, those options in, in our community as well. Because of the kind of community value that it generates. In terms of having those grandparents, the parents, the kids all, all contributing. So overall, I defer to Commissioner Yu's architectural opinions. I do think that those ideas of maybe making that deck for privacy more facing the back makes a lot of sense. I think that will also make the deck in general more usable. And I think probably that, from my perspective, is maybe less important to the homeowner than a lot of the other kind of interior space. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, very good. For me, I, I took a more, like you said, a more progressive view of the properties. I happen to know some, well, they don't live there now, but about three doors down, they have a very large lot. It's larger than yours. And they're, they did a major remodel and their house is very big and they have a grand backyard. So those six properties that are along Mountain Trail are lo, very large. The other two have little guest houses in the back, which I guess would qualify as ADUs, but they're pre-existing. One even has a little artist studio or something. So I looked at those, those six all separately. And, and of course, there's the one property in Benita that has the very large two-story house as well. And my feeling was that this, yeah, you look at the design, it's two-story. But the houses on both, on either side have not changed in probably since you were a kid. So I, I look at it rather than a bunch of small houses where someone's trying to build. You know, the, the mega mansion with all the little cracker boxes next, next door to it without insulting the smaller homes. But now you have big properties where you can afford to have a bigger home. And I think it, the lot affords it. I think it was a nice design. They, they gathered the second story in the middle as much as possible. Sounds like you went through several iterations with staff to do, to accomplish that. And that was some of the challenges with, with it. So I mean, the garage, I, that's fine. I think the existing garage is where it is, you know. So cutting to the side is making, utilizing the land that's there, it's not gonna change the profile. And I kind of agree. It's like you're gonna put the garages there anyway. It makes sense and I can, I can approve that without including it to the square footage. So I mean, what I'm all, I'm sort of hearing is that the deck area is, is the main consideration than just the consideration for an elevator to all the full. Anybody else? Any, any other?
No, just the, the deck facing the back, so maybe reducing or cutting out the.
Right.
The front and the side portion. And then that height, I think we need to reduce that down. It's gonna be way too big in that corner.
Okay. Okay, so do you want to, those are suggestions. We have to bring this back anyway, correct? So it sounds, it's been a complicated process, so I think maybe those two suggestions. Does that sound meaningful? Yes, come up. I'm sorry, yes. Does that sound doable to you?
If you don't mind, I mean, his comments are really proper.
Okay.
Is there any way, I mean, if we approve the project tonight, so I can work with the planning department on making the changes?
Well, I think we have to, I think we have to make a proposal subject to. I don't know, we can, because there's too many.
No, I'm just saying so we don't have to come back again and continue.
I think the way it's laid out, we have to come back for a, a, a approval proposal anyway. So, yeah, we sometimes make approval subject to, but we don't have an actual design. And I think, I don't know how you guys feel. Do you, would you rather, you want to see it before you?
Yeah, that's a tricky one.
It's, it's really up to us if we want to decide, do we want to see it? So we can say this is what we're approving versus we allow you to work with staff and, and the reasonability.
I mean, we went from.
Yeah, I understand.
It's a huge design to where we have now. It's only thirteen hundred square feet, basically. All we're adding is thirteen hundred square feet on the second floor.
The unfortunate thing is that we haven't, I haven't seen it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's just a matter of us seeing it because we, we have to come back to vote on it anyway, even if we approve it subject to. It won't be able, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'd like to see it come back. And then we can all be sure that we, you know, appreciate the changes and make that decision, right?
We would, I, I would say as long as we're all here, like, we don't necessarily have to have the whole family back, you know, that was a lot.
Send your architects. Are you clear on the changes that we're asking you to make though? Okay, so as long as you have a clear, okay, all right. That sounds good.
And I, we can work it with the planning department first, prior to.
No, I, yeah, I understand. No, it sounds like you guys have been working together so much, it'll be fairly easy to figure out exactly what it was, what we're talking about. And I think you get the idea, so we will have to.
Just to mention one more thing, you mentioned about the garage, the new garage that we're creating. Just to mention one more thing, you mentioned about the garage, the new garage that we're creating. Actually, it's very hard to see from the street, because you're looking at the south direction entrance, which is basically, there is a five-feet wall almost on the other side, where the driveway slides down into the existing parking. And one of the reasons we had to come up, other than he has an SUV and on the old garage, for some reason, they were built at very low ceiling. I mean, it's below standard. So we're, we're suggesting to lower the grade on the existing garage, two feet at least, so he can fit his, his SUV properly. Because really, if you go inside the garage now, I mean, it's like a storage area. It's not really a garage. You can touch the ceiling. So that's one of the reasons we made a large, little larger garage, just so he can have room for his SUV.
Okay, all right, very good. All right. Staff, do you, are you good with that, Clara, in terms of any clarification from us?
So, Vice Chair, would you like to continue this item to a date certain?
Yeah, I'm gonna, that's the next consideration. How long, Josh, go ahead.
If I may, we have a special request from our audience to make a public comment. Would the commission entertain that?
Oh, someone that was here that didn't, didn't understand the, sure. Sure, he's here. He's been here. He was just.
He's been very patient.
My name is Hong Cam. I'm just a neighbor to the na, two-house na, in the corner. I think that there's a couple of things that I wanna make a comment. One of us, I, I know a little bit about buildings, so one thing that is, it is a basement, okay, by the definition in turns up where you want to do the garage and all that. By the code definition, it definitely fit within that more than fifty percent of a below, you know, eight-foot building, you're more than four foot below, more than fifty percent of it, that is definition of a basement, so he got that. So I'm, but it looked like you guys were wondering if that is considered basement or not basement.
No.
That's, I, no, I don't think so, but then we, but we appreciate your comment. We, we appreciate your.
I think it's a basement.
Your, um.
So the second thing that I also, this is from a neighbor looking at it. That house was unusual along the whole mountain trail. If you count the whole A houses from, from Orange Grove all the way up to Lowell, those are the big lot. There's about A houses on. This is the only house that in which the driveway is not a circular or quarter circle or go up to a draw, this is the one that tuck in. It's built in the nineteen fifty-five, I think fifty-one, right around that time, that they did that house. So this is the only house that you will probably see the sixteen-foot width driveway go right into the garage. So if you go through the whole distance of nine-hundred some foot, you will see a sixteen-foot opening in which you see two-story. So in some sense that, no matter what he does, unless he completely demolishes the whole house, there's no way to avoid that portion looking two-story. Makes sense to you?
Okay, thank you.
So, so one of the things that I noticed that when you're talking about two-story, well, the house is not really two-story except that garage right now. And it is the only one that for the whole area built that way. So it, unless he completely demolishes the whole thing, you're not gonna avoid seeing that portion of it.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, now we'll officially close public comment. So, we're, we're gonna have, so we're gonna bring this back to date certain. Can you do it by the next meeting in two weeks? Thirty, well, fourteen. You tell us. Josh, you, you've worked with them more often than us. Tell us, you guys work. The next meeting is, the next meeting is two weeks.
I will dis, I will disclose that I'm not at the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
If we want, as long as we have a quorum and all that.
I mean, do I need to change all the drawings, including the three-dimensional and all of that, because that will really take time? I mean, if it's just a matter of.
Expert, what do you think, Josh, with the elevator and the decking? I think if you can just change the renderings for the deck and show us the placement of the elevator, I think that would.
I mean, I, I don't think they need the, I, I just wanted to clarify that they would have the option to add it later, because if they wouldn't, I would have suggested that they make sure to have it in already, but.
It's like we're mandating an extra bathroom or something.
Yeah, no, we don't need to do that. I just wanted to make sure that they would have the option. I didn't wanna approve it and then have them have to come back if they wanted to add that later.
There are two elevators.
Yeah.
And if you decide just to keep with one, it's okay.
That's fine. Yeah, yeah, I mean, to, yeah, to, to me, I just wanted to make sure that you would have the option to add the second if you decide that later. I didn't wanna lock you in, because it seems like.
Not to, not to tell you like which drawings to update, it's, it's basically all the drawings that would be affected by your change would have to be updated, cause we have to have a record set.
Who's the colored rendering? Who's the colored rendering?
I would think so, but I mean, is this in Revit?
Yeah, some is, some in Revit, some in AutoCAD.
So.
Yeah, so one, I think one of them is SketchUp, one is rendering, Revit and SketchUp.
Yeah, and I'm trying to think.
We did ask for a SketchUp model. We do have that available. It is difficult to get projected onto this laptop, but it is there for a reference if the commission so.
If they kept everything in Revit and got their views off of that and they updated their drawings with that, I have no problems with looking at the three-D models of Revit versus doing another model for SketchUp, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, what, whatever's easiest, as long as we see them.
What's, when is the next date?
It's the sixteenth, but I, is, that might, I might not be at the next meeting either, now that you said what you're gonna say. I don't wanna push it out, but, cause if Tom's here, we'll have a quorum, but then it'll be one person with sort of a fresh look. But even, I suppose, if you guys are here and you can tell them what we did, then, then we can still have the meeting, so.
Well, if you're not gonna be here, maybe I won't be here.
Nope.
The, the only thing I, I worry about, which would be the nightmare, is if the person with the fresh look has like a totally different opinion and then neither of us are here, you know.
I know, that creates a little bit of a conundrum.
Fun for anyone.
I think sixteen is okay for me, so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I'm planning on it at least.
Well, we'll do a, a quorum call, I mean, a roll call, right? And if Tom can't make it, then we won't have a quorum. That would be the only thing.
We should get them back as soon as they, they're available, so, yeah.
The other thing is, I think if you do have a quorum, I might have the option to join via Zoom or something. Is that the case or no?
That's legal.
We can, we, you can join if we have a quorum.
So I think I would have to check the exact, I'm a business traveler, but I should be able to join.
Okay, well, that's very nice of you. I won't be able to unless I can do it in the car while I'm driving. Sorry about the conundrum.
Elon, take the wheel.
Yeah, there you go.
No.
No, 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 no.
Just, just the update.
Just updates.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Just wanna see what the, what the changes will make it look like, basically.
Yeah, I don't know.
No.
I think we can.
Just to make sure that everyone has the ability to prepare the reports and materials, the applicant is requesting May, I'm sorry, June sixth for the continuation date.
Okay.
That works.
That's fine. It's up to him. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And I don't have to come in via Zoom.
Yeah, then we'll all be here probably, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we should all be here. Sorry to push it out, but yeah, that's fine. I know, it's just.
That's a lot of work, yeah.
Yes, he knows.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. So.
And we could state that the expectation at that point is that we will approve it, so the homeowner doesn't have.
Changes, yeah.
Subject to changes. That would be the expectation, so the homeowner doesn't have to start house hunting or whatever.
Okay, all right. So then I need a motion to move this item to a date certain, June sixth?
Motion to move this item to a date certain, June sixth.
Second, second.
A second?
Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Yes.
You too.
Very good. All right, well, so this is another time for anyone in the audience to come up and say, talk about anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no one, move on to planning commission reports. So anybody besides us, knowing we're not gonna be at the next meeting, have anything to talk about? The announcements, nothing?
Nothing for me.
I guess just speaking more of schedule, I am doing summer travels during July and then I get back August eighth, I think, so any meetings in July or before August eighth, I will not get.
Okay, all right. Planning, Clara, any?
All my business trips are currently planned the second, fourth weeks of the month, so.
How convenient.
I plan them.
Planning community preservation department, any?
Vice Chair, so for the next meeting, I do have a presentation for you. It's a capital improvement project for City of Sierra Madre Public Library. It will be publicly noticed, so I just wanna make sure that we do have a quorum for that date.
I plan on being here next week, or two weeks.
In two weeks. Okay.
You'll have to talk to Tom.
TSK project.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, well, then we will adjourn our meeting to May sixteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
So I'll clarify that I don't plan to.